Good evening. Welcome to the Red Hook Town Board Meeting. I'm Sue Crane, Supervisor for the Town. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. We've got a solid agenda tonight that's exciting and some of the things are going to be of interest to you, I hope, and to the audience at home. So we'll get started right away. We'll begin, as we usually do, with the Town Supervisor's Report for the Month. This is a financial report for the month of August, ending August 31st. To the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook, pursuant to Section 119 of the Town Law, I hereby tender the following detailed statement of all monies received and dispersed by the Supervisor during the month. The grand totals were opening balance $3,615,512. Receipts were $694,192. We dispersed $972,589, leaving a remaining balance of $3,337,115 and change in all cases. In terms of budget adjustments, there are a few. In the General A Fund, we are going to increase, we have increased revenues in the amount of $6,344. And you can see that we are increasing appropriations and the detail is there before you, in the amount of $20,494. And the largest amount of that, I just want to point out, is an amount of $14,150 that we are reimbursing Parkland's account for, from FEMA accounts when there was flooding from Hurricane Irene. So I just wanted to point that out to the Board, that that's the transfer there. In the B Fund, there's an increase in revenue accounted for by a Greenway grant of $7,500. We are reducing appropriations in the amount of $1,000. And the total increase in appropriations, therefore, is $8,500. And finally, in other funds, capital projects in particular, we are reducing appropriations in the amount of $3,777 and increasing appropriations in the same amount. And that is related to the Sisem Bridge construction. And that is the extent to which we have to report tonight. There are additional pages that show a variety of banking accounts and I think that the transfer tax is there. As of, currently, as of August 31st, we have accrued from the transfer tax on real estate over the county median. It is, that account is back up to almost $320,000. So I just wanted to point that out because it's always a growing account if things go well. So I will entertain any discussion or, I guess I'll say at this point, the above is a true and correct accounting of the balances shown in the books of the Town of Red Hook at the close of business on August 31st, 2013, and would entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. There is a Town Clerk's Report.
That needs to go to everyone. The first thing on the agenda. One of each.
I see. Okay.
Town Clerk Monthly Report, August 1 through August 31st. Total local shares remitted to Supervisor for Town Revenue, Amount remitted to Ag and Markets for the Spade and Neuter Program, $94. Amount remitted to New York State Department of Health for marriage licenses, $45. And amount remitted to New York State Environmental Conservation, for a total state, county, and local revenue of $5,458. Pursuant to Section 27 Sub 1 of the Town Law, I hereby certify that the foregoing is a full and true statement of all fees and monies received by me, Sue McCann, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook, during the period stated above in connection with my office. And I just have one other little announcement. Yesterday, we had the, we had received three sealed bids for the old highway demolition. They were open yesterday at the Town Hall at 3:00. In attendance was purchasing agent Ted Cudsey, Highway Superintendent Teresa Burke, and myself, Town Clerk Sue McCann. Three bids were received and opened. The first was Washington Estates Transport, Inc. from Rosendale, New York, and their bid was $59,600. K E K Excavators of Palatine Bridge, New York, $66,700. And Jupiter Environmental Services from Albany, New York, $85,900. And they, excuse me, the engineer is currently reviewing the bids and checking references and they hope to make their recommendation to the Town Board shortly. And that's it.
Thank you, Sue. Are there any additional announcements, Bill?
No.
Hi.
No.
I have none. Jim?
No.
Okay, we'll move along then. I'll pass these first for the first presentation, but we'll be calling on individuals who are here that wish to speak to the Board. And the first one, I believe, I'm going to call on is Mary Ann. Is she still here? There you are. Thank you for moving because I missed seeing you. Thank you for coming, Mary Ann. Mary Ann is our representative to Panda, which is Public Access Network.
Public Access Northern Duchess.
Oh, area, right. Thank you. It is on. No, you need to use it. Thank you.
And we were going to have a technical person here also, but I think we got confused with dates. So she may come to explain the technical issues and the equipment that we have purchased, the equipment that we need at the next meeting. So as Treasurer for Panda, I brought you a seven-month financial report showing the income and expenses. We billed the municipalities at separate times of the years of two towns, have paid their participation. The villages were just invoiced. So we'll be getting those revenues in. And so that is the basis of our income, is from the municipalities. We had submitted a grant proposal to the Benson Frost Foundation because part of our coverage is the Town of Rhinebeck and the Village of Rhinebeck. But Benson Frost covers only Rhinebeck, not Red Hook and Timbly. So we didn't get the grant that we were hoping for. We do need to update our equipment. So we've been doing that a little bit at a time and we do have, at least now we have backups. Before, if something broke, we were, essentially had business. Now we have backup equipment. Our current, what had been our current equipment became the backup because we have newer equipment. Steve was able to make some recommendations and even went to help with the purchase of some equipment because they can go to a special technical equipment place in New York City where they can get really good places. So our income is, just as we had projected, except for the studio shows. We keep trying to, we have a new painted and decorated studio. We have talk shows going on now. But nothing is actually paying for their show. These are just shows that are being produced and adding to the variety of Panda. We have a great cooking show, organic cooking show that Danielle does. So the expenses are, you'll see that it's seven months, so it's not half and half according to the budget. So we are basically within budget, just a little bit over budget in some areas because of the equipment purchases. And in other areas, we are under budget because of the savings that Danielle has been able to accomplish. And in some cases, we didn't have anything budgeted, like under professional fees. We had a new website designed for $500. He did a wonderful job. So that's under professional fees. And the other half of that was our auditor in order to get our taxes done. And what else do we have here? Our insurances are all paid for the year and we have a surplus there. Except we had a new policy this year that was required because of Homeland Security. Because we're a broadcasting station, we had to have this additional policy. And while we were getting new equipment, we weren't spending as much on repairs as we normally would. So that's going to balance out also. And as I say, we have three more checks coming in. So we're doing fine for the year.
That's great. Thank you for working for us.
Sure.
And could you remind the public that those people who have, because of changes at Time Warner, have lost the TV? If they don't have an HDTV, they can still approach Time Warner and get a box that will allow them to get Panda, right?
Exactly. If their television is older than, I believe, 2007, they don't have the internal function that would bring them the Channel 23. And Time Warner will give them a box for a year and then if they don't get a new television before the year is up, Time Warner will begin to bill them at the rate of $9 a month.
$0.99 a month.
$0.99 a month. But they start billing this coming January. It's a year ago they said they'd give them to you. So they said they were going to start billing January of '14.
So it's not a whole lot, but the television is probably going to need to be upgraded, presuming. And are there any other questions about Panda?
We're glad you're there.
And we're glad that people are actually watching. And we just need something like losing Channel 23 for people to say, oh, who's Panda?
Right, they miss it.
People watch it.
Right.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Thanks so much for coming. And we'll look forward to Danielle next week, or next, in two weeks, on the 25th. And I'll confirm with her. Thank you. The next person I'd like to call on is Johanna Moore, who has been the Director of the Red Hook Town Recreation Program, Summer Programs for, I don't know, 23 years or something?
I think a little longer than that.
Longer than that. Thank you for your report.
Long time.
Yes, it has been. Thank you for your good report.
Well, I think also, my life has been enriched by the kids in Red Hook. So it's a win-win for me. So thank you for having me tonight. I turned in my report. John has, as Directors, write a program report at the end of the summer. And Sue invited me to come tonight. So I thank you for all your time and bragging rights on a good summer. First, I'd like to say kudos to my staff because without them, this program would not run. It's not just a single, y'all operation. I have eight others who are there every day and give their all to the kids here. So I'm pretty proud of them. And also, we act as a team. They're creative, they're innovative. They're young, they can run, they can move just as quick as some of these kids do. So it's fun to see what they come up with to entertain them. One thing that I wanted to mention, and I know money is always an object. It's budgets and making every dime count. But this year, our overall budget went from $1,500 to $1,000. And while it doesn't seem like a whole lot, $500 for craft and sport equipment, those costs continue to rise. We try and pinch every little penny that we can muster up. And so if there's any chance of it coming back, that would be wonderful. But we do understand. We also came up with a solution with some of the parents to put a list of things that we might need that they can donate because they're very appreciative of the fact that this is a free program and that they're willing to maintain it as a free program if they can. So that's an alternative that could be a possibility. One thing that I'm concerned about is the lack of trainings. I know I'm an RN. A lot of times, people approach me on things and it's my license out there on the line. But I do think that there should be some trainings. And with a town this size, I think fire safety. We have a fire extinguisher up there in the shed, but I'm not quite sure how many actually know how to use a fire extinguisher. So we could get some training for the use of fire equipment. We also do a fire drill. I know that sounds crazy, or an emergency drill, in the park with the kids every summer. We designate the center of ball field as our emergency spots and we have two ways of getting out of the park. And the boys sit on one side and the girls sit on the other and we take attendance. And they're very cooperative and they find it very exciting. And so they're aware. So we need to be aware of how to fight a small little fire, you know. CPR, first aid, some of us have it, some of us don't. Also medication and EpiPen administration and those with special needs. We could use some training on those. Also, the other programs service the same clientele. So I think, you know, if we, as Directors, got together and talked with John or the Commission, I think that's important that we get some trainings for everyone. The brochure is still hung up here on the bulletin board. It's a lime green color. Those neon colors really work well in terms of marketing because if you put it in a normal color, people tend to lose those. But the neon ones kind of stick around forever. I included in the report data from 2009 to current in terms of signups. And this year, the townwide signup for the RIC program, so, was 97. And over the course of the five weeks, we registered another 111 children. So that brought us to 208 children that we had come to the park. Also, I included town demographics. The brochure states it's open to children of the Red Hook Central School District. The school district comprises of five townships. And some attend because parents work in Red Hook or they own a home and they're living elsewhere. Sometimes they visit grandma and grandpa's house and they attend. So I put them in the report. I don't know, Sue, do they have the report?
Everyone has to copy.
So we had, I know, a discussion about homeschool. I asked Mr. Finch and he thought that there are about 40 kids that are homeschooled here in Red Hook. So we had two this summer. Just, that could be another avenue where we could spread the information, you know. Also, we had some visitors come to the park. Deborah likes to take the bus and come down and picnic in the park. They tend to eat now in the picnic areas underneath the snack bar. That's a good place. It kind of separates them from our kids. Also, we had two ladies with their little dogs come to the park. And the kids really absolutely loved them. And I fell in love with one of these little dog. And, but they brought a whole other compassionate side to the kids and the kids got all excited about seeing them. And the weather was a factor. We had to close for four days this summer. And Week 4 brought excessive heat. And so we have a lot of kids that are asthmatics and different other health issues and health-related in terms of the heat. So we closed at 11 o'clock on Week 4. First aid, we had 22 cases. I don't think that's too bad for having 200 of these come to the park. So it was minor scrapes and.
Geez, I had that many when the grandkids come for the weekend.
No.
And they're only five of them.
But I also want to make everyone aware that it's not just a simple little park program anymore. We have a whole lot of kids that have a lot of different needs. We have six that are allergic to certain medications. We have three bee allergies. Food allergies are constantly on the rise. Six had peanut allergies. One so severe that they had to eat in a separate area and carry an EpiPen at all times. Also fruit and fish. Of course, we're not going to be fishing, but, you know. It's amazing. Also, we had the normal seasonal allergies and many with ADD and ADHD. We had eight asthmatics, three with mitochondrial disease. We had one with cystic fibrosis, post-traumatic stress. So, and autism-related disorders. So it's a wide gamut of things that we have to be aware of as professionals working with children. So I put in the recommendations about putting the money back into our budget, revamping our registration form to include educational and special needs. It's not so much an invasion of privacy, but we need to know that in terms of implementation of programming and how to deal with them effectively. You know, it's not fair for us to just have a blank sheet of paper with name and address and a contact person and not know how to handle them. Also, if they attended homeschool because a lot of times they need a socialization to make those contacts with the kids in the regular educational program. The trainings. Cell phones. I don't know if it's possible for the town to provide a disposable type cellphone. There's no phone at the park and a lot of us use our own cell phones. I personally don't have a cellphone, but we have to use other counselors' phones in order to make a call. And sometimes the parents need a phone to call us in case something happened. Also with the groundskeepers, I talked with Sue about our concerns about those. Also, we use communication sites such as Red Hook Moms and Parents so that we could post cancellations. Sometimes we had 83 to 115 views and that was a good way of communicating early in the morning if we had to cancel for raining. We need just more sand in the sandbox. You know, sometimes we have 30, 40 kids in a sandbox and there's a whole lot of things going on. There's Legos, there's a whole Lego table of little boys over there doing wonderful creative things. So we have RIC's Got Talent, you know, just like America's Got Talent. And there's 10 acts a day and they're pretty amazing. And, you know, they have a lot of courage to get up there at six and seven to sing in front of a group of us, you know. So, but everybody's respectful, they applaud and we give them a rose in honor of the performance. And also, we had three very lovely young Girl Scouts who came and their Silver War project is to thank a soldier. And so they had the kids make cards and they're going to be sent out to some operation something in California. And they were just a pleasure to work with. Also, I just want to say that the volunteers are the kids that come back after they've reached out and they know the program. It's fun to be with them and they work very, very hard. And so a big thank you to them. And I did not include some of the thank yous that we got just to kind of wrap it up. But Sarah Scott wrote me a really cute little note. And it goes to how these kids think and how they really appreciate what the town has to offer them. It says, "Dear Mrs. Moore, thank you for the fun and help. I love spending time with you at camp and I only have two more years with you at camp. So I was wondering if I could be like another helper or another pair of eyes for you. Love, Sarah Scott." So these are treasures for me. The best reward that somebody can have. And so it was a fun summer and thank you very much for giving the kids in Red Hook this opportunity to stay together and have some fun and respect one another.
Well, thank you for all your years. I had one question for you. And that was, when, we have a rainy summer, as we did this summer. And you don't have to answer this now, but just think about it. Is there any possibility of notifying parents on rainy days that could bring children to do activities here for a couple of hours in this community room? And just think about it and we'll talk about it another time. But it seems a shame to cancel, you know, for lack of, for lack of a place to be inside. And maybe we'll figure out some kind of a pavilion or something that we could do that we wouldn't have to cancel because of rain. Although a thunder shower is probably, parents want to pick them up and take them home.
No.
No?
Because if it stops raining, then like how they, questions we get is, how hard does it have to rain in order for you to cancel? And if it stopped raining and it was raining, do we really have to come and pick them up now? Or, you know, are you going to stay later because it rains? So, I mean, you really, you know, or do you need it to rain?
Call it or not, right?
Yeah, so it's a hard decision, but unless, we'll talk.
Okay, all right. Well, maybe as the new park grows and we have a new pavilion, that'll be a solution for you.
And each side, yeah?
Yeah. Thank you so much, Johanna. Okay. Is June Lawson here by any chance? June called me and thought she might be able to come. Okay. And is there someone named Luna here? And Luna, could you come up and speak to us about your interests? Thank you for coming. I didn't get your last name. Forgive me.
Alonso.
I'm sorry?
Alonso.
Okay. Can you spell that for me?
Well, it's actually a hyphenated name. But Alonso is A-L-O-N-S-O. And then the next part is hyphen Glasner, G-L-A-S-N-E-R.
Thank you. Okay.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Luna and I'm from California, from the San Francisco Bay Area. And I go to school at Bar College. I'm a sophomore. And this summer, I had an internship in San Francisco with the Center for Biological Diversity. And I helped them with a, one of their projects that's called the Clean Air Cities Campaign. And so what we're doing is, we have this resolution and we're trying to get as many cities across the country to adopt it. And it's in support of the Clean Air Act, which is really, really important to this country and to the environment. And it's done so many good things in keeping our air clean. And it's a really important tool in, for protecting our air and regulating carbon emissions. And so what we're doing with this resolution is the cities that adopt it are saying that they're in support of this resolution, keeping it alive, like, you know, it's still there, but keeping it alive and having it. there, but keeping it alive and having it as this important tool to curb carbon emissions. And so, yeah, it would be great if Red Hook were to join the other cities that have already said they were going to adopt this. And I think so far there are about 60, 66 cities across the US that have decided to adopt this resolution.
Okay. And you can see that it's on the agenda tonight for discussion, so we appreciate a face attached to the cause and thank you. And thank you for your volunteer work.
Thank you.
Do we have a copy of it?
Yes, it's in your, it's in your packet. It's, it's under tab seven, in your packet. Should be. No?
Oh.
Okay. If it isn't, Bill, I have to step out for a few minutes. I'll make sure that you get copies of it. Does, has anyone else missing that?
Well, it was emailed to everybody.
Yeah, I did get it.
Well, okay.
I did print it.
Yes, it was emailed.
It's the EPA in support of, right?
I'm just looking for mine. I'll bring us copies when I come back.
It was under my tab number eight in my things.
Oh, okay, maybe that's what we're looking at. You're right. Yes. It's the EPA agency, right? Reducing greenhouse gas pollution under the Clean Air Act. We do have it.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the board? Mr. John, how are you tonight?
Good, Town Supervisor. John Douglas Henry. Couple of different things. Based on what Joanna said about training, if you are interested, Town Supervisor, you can give me a call at a later time. And I have avenue for grants for training that could work out for the camp personnel as much as for Teresa's gang out in the Highway Department. And there is some training that we probably can give to the people in the main building up there.
Great, great. I will contact you and find out more about it.
Sure.
Thank you, John.
Absolutely. Second thing is the, I see you have on your agenda, speed limits and parking. I don't know what that's all about, but I'm going to listen, but I will throw on my two cents before you get there. I don't know where this is coming from and I don't know how it started, but I've lived here my whole life. I really don't think we have a problem with speed limits and with other roads. If you want to have where the roads, future roads, you have a bike path or a walking path adjacent to the road, that might be a good idea. And then the rec park. I've been told by town officials that the, we have no money to do anything on the west side of Linden Avenue for our rec park property. We bought it five-plus years ago, so the town taxpayers have been paying for the parcel. I've been told that it's a paperwork snafu. If the town board, in their budget process between now and the, I think you have to have it done by October 31st, if I remember the dates correctly. If they took money from the Highway Department and put it into the rec department for three or four weeks, where you take three or four employees from the Highway Department and you figure in their trucks or whatnot, so that they can actually do a project of some kind at the rec park next year. So we have a little progress towards our goal where we spend a lot of money to have plans drawn up and whatnot. And one of the things on top of the list probably would be nice to start would probably be asked more away the, the bike path and walking path. And we have a very knowledgeable group of individuals in the Highway Department who can do excellent work and they are qualified as much as any private contractor is. And if we, and it sounds like all's it is, from what I understand, it's just a paperwork issue where you've got to put the numbers in appropriately in your down budget and then have those workers work for the rec department for three or four weeks in the spring or the fall, whatever, trees can release them from other duties so that they can work maybe, and get some, a little progress every year. So we, you know, little steps, steps forward. Because obviously our plan is try to get $70,000 to put in a water line for a ramp. We tried that a couple of years, we didn't get that money and other things. So we've got to think sort of outside the box to try to progress on our park that's we're paying for, but it's just sitting there. It would be nice if we could get some fields and stuff in so the kids could have appropriate fields to use and whatnot.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none. We'll close the public comment period for this hour and there will be an opportunity if you can hang in long enough to speak at the, at the very end of the meeting, at the end of the agenda. Okay, so the first thing on the agenda is consideration of Community Preservation Fund and purchase of development rights for two properties. One being the Kaseke cattle farm, the second being the Close Family Farm. And because I am going to recuse for the Kaseke discussion, Dr. Ross will lead the discussion on the Kaseke farm. And I believe you'll call for a public hearing date on that and then you'll let me know when you're, when you're ready. Excuse me. Thank you, John.
So if we can, I guess if we can hear about the Kaseke farm first and then we'll have a little discussion at the board level here?
My name is Carrie Watkins Bates. I'm with Sina Hudson. I'm here tonight with our colleagues from the Dutchess Land Conservancy. While I don't have a formal presentation for the Kaseke Farm cattle project, I did make a, a brief presentation previous, previously in the year, I'm sorry, I don't have the date with me, on that. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, but we'll note that this is a project, along with others, that we've done successfully in partnership with the Dutchess Land Conservancy, the town of Red Hook, and the USDA Farm and Ranch Lands Protection Program, matching funding sources from all of those above to purchase the development rights on farmland in the town of Red Hook. So beginning in 2011 in that partnership, the project's on West Philly Corners Road and followed up last year with the successful completion of the Greg Farm project and the Kalina Farm project. This project, the Kaseke Farm cattle project, is a continuation of that work. We have been notified by the USDA that we have received the funding from the federal partnership. And so at the consideration of the town board, we would be looking to complete the funding portfolio with 50% funding from the USDA Farm and Ranch Lands Protection Program, 25% funding from the, from the Sina Hudson Land Trust, and the request is 25% funding as we've done other projects for the town.
Just like the last project that you stated, yeah. That was pretty much my take, huh? How about you guys, please?
Yeah, there were, there were a couple of things that were still up in the air about the Kaseke farm, like articles in here at that last meeting, but it had to do with the location of the footprint for any future building. And then the access, I thought, you know, whether there was some consent to have access along the main road from the parcel or, or middle road. Any of those questions?
Some of those items have been discussed. I know that we haven't had any further discussion with the town board at all about it. On the issue of access, it's one that we're looking to work on as part of our diligence with them, is that the right-of-way access across there. So that is only to do with, and I do not have a resolution on that issue.
Did, do we have Kaseke farm in our, in our packet tonight?
It was not in the packet. I'm sorry.
We just have the resolution for the public hearing. Yeah, we did have that previously and I didn't know that, so I didn't bring it with me.
So I apologize. In conversation this morning with the supervisor, we were prepared to make a presentation at the date of the public hearing, so I'm sorry, we did not bring any of the materials with us.
It's not the public hearing we can address.
We'll bring materials for presentation.
And the, the couple of questions that Bill raised are probably settled by then and solved by the public hearing time as well, or?
I, I'll say that I'm hopeful. Typically, some of the more complicated title issues, for instance, the right-of-way that, that Mr. O'Neill referenced, sometimes we don't get half quite clear, more clear until we're closer to closing. But those are issues that we work together with our attorneys and I know that the town's attorney is, is part of those discussions as well.
We can proceed with the public hearing, even if that's not completely cleared up, can't we, Chris?
Sure. Certainly set it.
And just make a contingent upon the titles and so on. Okay, so at this point, if, if we're all willing, we can make a resolution, set it for public hearing.
So, Mr. Chairman, you have a resolution establishing a date for a public hearing regarding a proposed purchase of development rights for the Close Farm under the town's CPF program.
Yes, I do.
And that already has a date projected right October 8?
It has a proposed date of October 8th. For this one at 8:30.
Well, I would propose.
For this one, yeah, 8:30.
I would propose this resolution. If you want me to read it or how do you want to handle it?
Uh, yeah, if you don't mind, though, I think just from the now, therefore be resolved is sufficient that you guys have.
But based upon the draft of the proposed resolution in regard to the proposed purchase of development rights for the Kaseke farm under the town's CPF program.
Are we doing Kaseke or Close?
No, Kaseke, that's right. Kaseke is 8:15.
Okay.
All right. CPF is the Community Preservation Fund. But based upon this resolution, it'd be resolved by the town board, the town of Red Hook, that the town board should hold a public hearing on October 8, 2013 at 8:15 PM here at Town Hall 7340 South Broadway to hear all interested parties on the proposed acquisition of an interest or right in Kaseke Farm described in the attached form of notice for the purpose of preserving open space under the town's Community Preservation Fund program as described in the attached form of notice, which is available. And that the town clerk then would be authorized and directed to publish said notice of the said public hearing in the Poughkeepsie Journal, the Kingsley Freeman Official Newspapers, honored before September 24th. So I, so move.
I'll second that, Bill. And just for discussion, that's, that's our regular board night, so it'll occur in our regular board meeting, which is good for the, the general public, because they're used to us meeting at those times. Any other discussion? Hearing none? We'll, we'll do a roll call vote on that then, Bill.
Yes.
Did we? Did someone?
Yes, Bill moved and.
Oh, it was, all right, I'm sorry.
Jim seconded.
I blinked. It's a busy reading here. Yes, yes.
Yes.
Brendan?
Yes.
And yes. Okay, so that public hearing will be October 8, 2013 at 8:15 PM. And at that point, I can bring Sue back in. She was just recusing herself on this one and then we'll continue.
Is she going to vote?
Yes.
Yes, she did.
I heard her. The second CPF PDR consideration is the Close Family Farm LLC. And I believe this is the first time we've had a chance to consider this and thank you for the packet of materials and the voluminous, all of the projects have seemingly a lot of paper involved and thank you for coming this morning and helping the CPF committee and I'm glad you're here, Carrie. Maybe because we haven't discussed this one, it would be well to just give a quick overview about the, the project. I don't see, I was hoping Susan Isrodi was going to be here from the CPF committee, but we, you know, pretty much can put it together based on our discussion this morning, I think, and answer any questions. So if you don't mind leading the conversation.
Again, my name is Carrie Watkins Bates with Sina Hudson and with me is our colleagues from the Dutchess Land Conservancy. So while we don't have a more formal presentation for tonight, you were provided with an overview of the acquisition cost estimates and a series of resource maps for the Close Family Farm. As I explained with the Kaseke project, this is one that follows on the heels successfully from 2011 of 10 additional projects that we've done in the town of Red Hook that match federal funds at 50% from the USDA Farm and Ranch Lands Protection Program with 25% funding for acquisition from Sina Hudson. And in those previous projects, 25% from the town of Red Hook with project-related support, or project-related costs coming from the Dutchess Land Conservancy and the town of Red Hook. The Close Family Farm, as the Community Preservation Fund, or the, the CPF PDR joint committee has, has looked at, and I know we'll be making a recommendation, I don't think I'm spoiling anything, I'm saying that it was a positive recommendation for this project. The Close Family Farm is listed as a first-tier priority parcel in the Community Preservation Project Plan. If you're familiar with the map, it's in your package, it's, those are the bright orange parcels. It is one of the few last remaining unprotected tier-one parcels, tier-one parcels in that project plan. So we have worked successfully with the family, the Dutchess Land Conservancy and Sina Hudson together, and successfully for an application to funding, for funding from the USDA Farm and Ranch Lands Protection Program. And we're hopeful that this is a project that the town will consider, as would be others for funding to purchase the development rights. I'll note for this and for, as with previous projects, while Sina Hudson and the Dutchess Land Conservancy are partnering on the front end, these conservation statements are held by the Dutchess Land Conservancy. And so the partnership between us has been so critical and able to enable us to move all these projects forward. And this really is the case, not just with DSC and Sina Hudson, but with the partnership of the town and the USDA and in some cases, in one project last year at that county, that the sum is just greater than the parts. We're able to do so much more by leveraging all of our resources, both time and money to do these projects. So we're so just very thankful for the partnership with the town. It really accelerates the farm and protection work that we're able to do in a way that we're not able to do in other communities, so. So, I don't know, the parcel is estimated at 103.49 acres. If there's any other questions, we'd be happy to answer, but we can, we can all put together more thoughtful in terms of materials and displays for the public hearing.
We'll make these maps available at the town clerk's office for anyone who's interested in either the maps or the acquisition cost. That should be there, it's public document. Okay, thank you very much. Has the board any questions about this? The family is represented here by Mr. and Mrs. Christopher Close and I believe that we'll hear lots more at the public hearing, but do you have any questions about this particular parcel?
It kind of fits in with our overall plan, Sue. And this is the first time we've seen information, but we've been discussing it for a month or two now, so.
It's very.
One thing I might say publicly, that it in fact is the gateway to our water supply. Most of all the water that comes into the Red Hook aquifer flows.
Most all the water that comes into the Red Hook aquifer flows through that form, correct? I'm sure, I'm sure you check it daily.
Oh, we would have hit one above 80 degrees now.
Well, I'd like to say publicly thank you to the Close Family, because it is a treasure in terms of land and beauty and productivity for many, many years, and I had the pleasure of accidentally sitting with one of your neighbors at a local restaurant tonight when I had a burger just before the meeting, and he's thrilled that it's going to be protected forever, and most of us will be if, if all goes well with all of this public hearing and so on, and the, and the funding. We are very, very thankful to you, to you all.
We are thankful to be here in Red Hook, 70 years.
Okay, so Jim, I'm going to ask you about the public hearing, and makes sense for us to have them back-to-back, I would imagine, next time?
Yeah.
And the timing on the first was?
8:15.
8:15.
Okay, on October--
October 8.
8:15 on October 8. Okay, so what, what would you say, 15 to 20 minutes for a public hearing? Sometimes it's hard to tell, but 20 minutes maybe should be enough time, right? So if we, if we said 8:30 for the Close Farm on that same night, that would probably work out pretty well, don't you think? Okay, all right, so let's schedule the Close Family Farm at 8:30 on October 8.
That's what we have printed here, works out perfect.
You do? Oh, we do?
Yes.
Okay.
In the resolution.
Okay, so the resolution reads, establishing a date for a public hearing regarding the proposed purchase of development rights for the Close Farm under the town's Community Preservation Fund program. Now therefore be it resolved by the town board of the town of Red Hook, that we shall hold a public hearing on October 8 at 8:30 o'clock at the Town Hall 7340 South Broadway, to hear all interested parties on the proposed acquisition of an interest or right in the Close Family Farm described in the attached form notice, for the purpose of preserving open space under the town's Community Preservation Fund program. The town clerk is hereby authorized and directed to publish notice of said public hearing in the Poughkeepsie Journal and the Kingston Freeman, the official newspapers of the town, honored before September 24th, which is not less than 14 days prior to the date of said public hearings. Please take further notice that copies of said applications are available through you at the office of the town clerk, again at 7340 South Broadway, by order of the town of Red Hook. And I so move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. It'll see you in one month. It's very exciting.
Thank you very much.
And we may have even more news by then. And I hope people will come and, and respond as they have in the past, so positively to this program. Thank you. Thank you all. Okay. The next on the agenda, as we face the month ahead, to address the needs of the town financially, we have since the 2% cap, which has been mandated by the state, municipal governments and school districts, we have an obligation to let taxpayers know if we think that we are going to need to override that tax, so that they can tell us about it, and tell us what they think about it. And so we are going to, tonight, set a public hea, I think it's a public hearing, isn't it?
Yes.
Establish the date of a public hearing regarding the adoption by the town board of the town of Red Hook for local law G of 2013, to override the tax levy limit for fiscal year 2014. We are not certain that we will need to do this, this is simply in preparation, if we find at the end of this month that we have the need to override, we will prepare, we will be prepared with having discussed this in public, and the public hearing will be an opportunity for the citizens of Red Hook and taxpayers of Red Hook to tell us how they feel about a tax override, and so we are proposing that, that public hearing, I believe could be that same night. Does it have to be any earlier than that, Chris? I don't think it does, is it?
No, I think that's, that's certainly timely in terms of your budget process, right?
I was just trying to remember between the, between the public hearing and the actual override, that should give us enough time, right?
Yeah, we just, it would, it would need to be filed, so before your final budget adoption.
Okay, okay.
So, yeah.
Do we have a confusion with the rumors that there may be a different limit?
Well, there is confusion, because I received today, confirm, at least a statement from the controller's office, that it's a 2% override, and yet a couple of, a 2% cap, yet a couple of weeks ago, we received some information about it being less than that. The cap would be more than 1. whatever it was.
1.6.
Six. So I, I'm not confused, or the latest is that it's a 2%, but--
And if you just got, got that from the controller of this town's--
I just, I just got it from someone there, and the question is whether they just recycled last year's notice, or whether they have changed their minds. I haven't read anything about it, so all I can say is that we know there will probably be a 2%.
Can, can this override work? Should we find that it is 1.6 instead of 2? I noticed it doesn't mention the amount.
Right, right, the override is just an--
To override whatever it is.
Budgetary decision on the court of the board at that time.
Whatever the, whatever the state's--
Yeah, it reads tax levy limit.
Okay.
So, okay, so we have the local law to override in front of us, and we have the, a date to establish a public hearing, whereas the proposed form of local law G to override the tax levy limit for fiscal year 2014 has been submitted to the town board of the town of Red Hook on September 5, 2013, whereas the town board has determined that the proposed local law is best described as a local legislative decision concerning routine administration and management of the State Environmental Quality Review Act, therefore be it resolved that the town of Red Hook, by a favorable vote of not less than a majority of all the members of the board, as follows, the town board of the town of Red Hook shall hold a public hearing on October 8, 2013, and I believe we could do this at 8 o'clock, before the two public hearings we discussed earlier. In Town Hall 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, to hear all interested parties on said proposed local law, at which time and place it shall be determined by the said town board whether to adopt the proposed local law. Town clerk is hereby authorized and directed to publish said, notice of said public hearing, again in the official papers, not less than five days before the, prior to this date of the said public hearing. So that would be, we have a five day, not less than five days. So that is the, the motion to set a public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any further comments, discussion, questions?
You know, my only discussion would be Sue, obviously I can certainly see the wisdom of doing this, which we should, you know, especially based with payments we have for the new highway garage and, and everything else, where we, the entire board, have knowledge enough of that time, because I know we'll get your budget on, what, the 30th, right?
We'll be getting the budget, right. The tentative budget on the 30th, right?
Or sue her, possibly, if she have it on the 30th, yeah, so.
Okay. Yeah, so we will by October, I will by October 6th, have a fairly good budget sense to share with you before that date, and we'll probably know better than--
So we'll have a good sense once we--
I think we will. I think we'll have a pretty clear understanding of, you know, our needs by the, by the 8th of October, yeah.
Okay.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
So I'll have to excuse myself again.
Yes. Brenda, we wish you a wonderful weekend.
Well, thank you very much.
Highlight of a family life.
Highlight of a family life, right. Very happy for you and your family. Okay. Now, we have, very patiently waiting for us, someone in the audience who's interested in talking about puppies and need for a food bank for them. Stephanie Fitzpatrick, our animal control officer, has an idea, and she would like to discuss it with you and see how you feel about it. Welcome, Stephanie, thank you for coming.
Hi, everybody, how are you?
We are fine.
I'm working in the community, I've been around here for a long time, working at High Park and Regis now. High Park has the SPCA, for Community Food Bank, for that. Red Hook, I don't think it does it. So I would like to try and talk to the local stores, Hanaford, Agway, Pet Country, they throw out their food that's outdated, you know, their old dog food. Try to see if we can get some of that and open up a community food bank for the animals. Susan, you want to hear it? She also walks, works the dogs at Dr. McDonald's office for us, so she and I would like to try and do something together to get it started. I mean, the community needs it. Unfortunately, with times being rough and the elderly can't get to the SPCA down in High Park to get the food, the animals, they need them. They really need their animals to keep their pressure down, keep their sanity, just, we need something here in the community, and I'd like to try and start something here in the community with that. So I'm asking the board to see if I can possibly talk to the local stores, you know, talk to a couple different places about getting a smaller shed put in, maybe try and do it in the recyclable center, where I'd be down there, Susan or another volunteer on Wednesdays when they're open, to have the community come in and get a dog, bag of dog food or cat food, whatever they need. Really, I think, would be a very good, good thing for the community.
Okay, so we're going to ask the board now for questions from you, and ask how you think it's going to work. I heard you say Wednesdays, is that your proposed timing is not Saturdays, but Wednesdays, when they're not quite so busy?
Yeah, because the recyclable center, I went down there a couple times to see it, it's really busy on Saturdays.
Yes.
I'd rather not be crowded in there, and, you know, the town highway garage is there.
Okay, just want to make sure that it was, we're talking about one day a week?
One day a week, you know, in the mornings, whenever they're open, so that we can try and be down there together with it.
Could you say like 10 to 12, they're open, I believe, from, from 8, 8 to 1, so would two hours be enough?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just because I just want to make sure that they can get there, you know, a lot of people, you know, if for some reason they're stuck on the weekend, they say, call me up on the cell phone, staff, I need food. Of course, I'll go down there, open it up, get them a bag of food. We're here for the community, we're not here to, I know everybody's choosing, make you a whole mighty buck, you know, I'd like to rather, you know, help them out a lot.
So are you asking the town to invest in a shed for this, this purpose, or are you asking the recycling center to set aside a corner for your use, or?
Well, I'm trying to, trying to find out about a shed right now.
Okay.
I might be able to get one donated, that's what I'm working on first, before I can ask the town for money for that.
Okay.
I did price them out, like a plastic little four-by-eight shed, Home Depot's like $500, with the lock on it, trying to work some magic with some friends of construction people of ours with extra wood that they have, to try and build something for us. You know, if we can always get something donated, I'd like to do that by the time I'm sure.
That's great.
But what I'm asking for right now is that I can talk to the community about starting something like this, and talking to the stores to see if we can get the food donated. Also, the outdated food, I mean, they can't sell it, why fill it out?
Do you have any history on that? Do supermarkets tend to do that? I mean--
Yeah, they do.
It's done elsewhere?
Yep, they do. The SPCA collects a lot of that stuff down there from--
Do they?
Yeah, they have a big, how big is that shed up there? A lot of those big Zippo sheds down there. Filled with food, cat food, dog food, canned food, dry food.
Four by 14, is that what it is?
At the SPCA?
Yeah. You know, a lot of people do go there, working at the SPCA many, many years ago, a lot of people do come there, you know, they ask for food, and, you know, they just don't have the money that we, six, seven dollars to pay for a bag of food.
It is expensive.
Have you considered cooperating with Rhinebeck at the, at the dog park, and having it a two-town operation?
I haven't, I just want to approach the board with this part of it right now. I know we've tried to do something with Rhinebeck before, and they, they're kind of hesitant, but we do work very well with Roger, I love Roger, he helps me and I help him a lot, so I mean, it's, you know, it's a very close working relationship with that. I mean, yes, if you would like me to, I'm more than willing to talk to him.
Just a thought.
No, I--
I mean, I'll leave it up to you, it's, Rhinebeck has a number, they even have a big, a big store for, cell store, too.
Yeah, they do, the Pet Country stuff there, that's the first thing about Pet Country, Hanaford, Agway, Stop &amp; Shop, you know, they're all local.
Stop &amp; Shop is, you know, down there, whatever.
Yep, so I mean, it's a very good community, and everybody talks--
I think the recycling center is a, is a good, you know, that's a good, busy place that, that people would be comfortable, because they go there through the goods exchange anyway.
Right.
You know, it, it feels like it would make sense to me, but that's just my take on it, you know, it's, yeah, it's for--
So would you, you'd be collecting foods that, that morning Wednesday, and then you'd also be distributing to those who came?
That food Wednesday, yep. So if somebody like, you know, somebody wants to just drop off a bag of dog food, or their dog passed on, or the cat passed on, they have extra food, they can bring it there too, you know.
And you would be locking it up if it isn't picked up that late?
Yes, it would be locked up.
I think if anybody would ask, do we have to require anybody to have a sticker to get the dog food, or not drop it over and pick it up? You think so, right? That wouldn't apply? The stickers that we sell are just for the recycles and garbage.
I think, again, in that, in the instance, if you're going to be selling stickers, it's kind of taking away from--
Yeah, no, but we wouldn't want to.
Well, their, their talk is just to get them into the recycle area that you stick on.
I've gone there, that, that's pretty good, they, I think they, you know, somebody said I'm just coming, you know, for, you know, to the dog and cat food exchange, I don't think that has them at all.
It shouldn't be an issue, no.
Right, yeah.
I just feel that the community needs it.
And probably a good many of them that do that might have stickers already, because they come to our recycling center, yeah.
Also, in the past, Sue just reminded me that the SPCA was also had some school districts that, the teachers in Christmas time, instead of asking for gifts, they'd ask for donations towards the animals. You know, we could possibly talk to schools about that, Mr. Finch, and see what we can do about that, too, really get the community involved in it, you know, it's a community project. I mean, if some girl scouts, boy scouts would be involved.
I like it.
So it's all mostly canned and dried, nothing--
Yeah, canned and dried blankets, you know--
Cat for pig or something, if we got to deal with.
No bones and things like that.
No, okay? That's what I--
Here we charge.
I just, that's too visual, Bill. That's too visual for me at this hour.
Do you have any questions?
Well, I just thank the two of you so much for coming forward with this idea, it's a great idea, you're willing to give some time, you'll probably involve other people who are interested in pets, and you'll have a little group of people who are doing this every Wednesday. I think it's wise to keep it, keep the hours tight.
Right.
You know, because there is, there is timing issues there about pickups and stuff from the Carters, so, and the, and the goods exchange is not open on Wednesdays, I don't think, so, right? That's not, that's not available until Saturdays. So this would be a nice, you know, a nice compliment to it, yeah.
We also have the Facebook--
Let's try it.
And we could advertise it on that, to get the people involved there, too. We have, I do remember having likes on the Facebook page, we keep getting more people and more comments on it, love that page, you find dogs their owners, pretty cracking, but that's another way we could also--
Is that your Facebook that you've done?
I did it for the town, yeah.
For the town?
Yep.
And it helps people find their dogs?
Yeah, people say, oh, I'm missing my cat, I miss my bird, missing my dog, one of them had a pig on there at one time, so I mean--
Uh-oh. That missing pig.
They, they find it, it's great, I mean, High Park, it works out well, Red Hook works out well, so, and people comment on, like, I'm-- out well, so. And people comment on, like, I'm always telling them, "I licensed your dog. Go see some of your cats" and this and that, you know. People don't know they've licensed their dog. They're like, "Oh, I licensed three years ago. I'll have to do it again." So, it's very, very informative.
That's great. Well, thank you both, very much. That's a great idea and I, and would you mind giving us a report through the liaison to you? Brenda will be back on-
Sure.
-the twenty-fifth. If you can't make it, you can tell us how it, how it's working out.
Yeah, get us started.
That would be great.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you both, very much.
Bye-bye.
Okay, next on the agenda is a discussion about speed limits, number one. It's talking about, this, this agenda item really has to do with the roads of Red Hook. Thank you, Teresa, for coming to help us sort through this. We've all had, I'm sure, discussions with local residents and I've had calls about town roads, some of them county roads, roads that exist in Red Hook, that in the eye of some of the residents are not appropriately signed. And that is to say, they believe the signage is not restrictive enough on the roads where they live. That's generally the complaint. If there's a complaint to me, that's generally the complaint. Moreover, those of us on the board who've talked about this, and I'm sure Teresa has talked about the, about it with the men, we, she and I have talked about it, that there seem to be signs that have just been left up on some roads. And I can think of one county road where there's a fifty-five mile an hour speeding sign, you know. Speed limit within New York State is fifty-five miles an hour on a county road, where within a hundred yards, there is a thirty-five mile an hour cautionary sign. And the road is so windy, you couldn't possibly do safely fifty-five. The thirty-five holds from that point until it meets a major highway. So, there, there are some signage issues. And Teresa and I were talking about her need from, from her responsibility point of view to state law, I guess it's state law, to do the signage, replace the signage, speed signs and so on, with reflective signing. Is that what we talked about?
Yes, we're trying to update, we're, we have a constant ongoing program to update our signs to the retro reflectivity and high visibility.
Okay.
And we've started with signs in order of priority. So, you'll notice that all the stop signs in town have been replaced.
Right.
We are working on the speed limit signs right now. We're finding some discrepancies. So, what we'd like to do is to be able to reconcile the posted speed limits to the actual speed limits in some places, or things that should never have been posted in the first place, but have just been there for so many years that people accept it as the speed limit. So, we've been working with Chris on this as well in order to determine what, what we need to do from this point forward, as well as getting requests from residents to reduce speed limits on certain roads because they've been impacted directly by people driving into their yards and into their houses. And, you know, there's, we'd have to do an evaluation overall through the town for our speed limits.
How about county roads?
County roads are not-
Because Bud's Corner is a county road.
Right.
And that's the one that's fifty-five in one direction and unlimited in the other direction. There's no, there's no sign, I guess. I don't know.
Well, in evaluating a county road or any road, including a town of Red Hook Road, you need to talk to the county DPW and to the state DOT. They do their evaluations, their engineering, and the town itself cannot set the speed limits arbitrarily on the county roads, but they can request a study to say, "We believe that this speed limit is incorrect. We would like to see this speed limit. Can you initiate an evaluation?" And they will come back with their answer to your question.
We have several county, county roads that I hear complaints about. Not only Bud's Corner, but Spring Lake Road, for instance.
Yeah. There are East Curly Corners, Bud's Corners Road, Lasher Road, which is half in Duchess and half in Columbia.
Is Lasher a county or county?
County.
County. Now, of course, you're referring to, the only thing we can set is thirty-five on town roads. We can set it at thirty-five, correct?
We have a setting of thirty-five miles per hour on all town roads.
And you've found discrepancies with the signage at present time?
But I just want to add that, as Teresa said, it's not actually the town that sets that thirty-five mile an hour speed limit. It's actually set by state DOT after a request for a particular either area or linear speed limit. So, we have a combination of, there's a town-wide thirty-five mile an hour speed limit on town roads, but there are specific roads that DOT, at the town's request, has established at a particular level.
Lower than thirty-five, you're referring to?
Right, some of them thirty and so forth, right.
Right. If we, a town road that we want to reduce from thirty-five, we have to get DOT's permission.
We, well, DOT actually has to enact a regulation, yeah.
Right, but we can post everyone, a maximum, every town road at thirty-five by state law, can we not?
If, well, if you wanted to bring everything-
If a town-owned road I'm referring to now.
Well, again, all of the limits are set by state law, so at least with one exception, which is you could establish some, some lower limits for school zones. But in general, town road limits, you know, you have to set up, you could, you, you can't, you can't set them lower than what they've been set up by DOT.
Which is-
Right, which is thirty-five. Yeah, thirty-five is the lowest, right. Well, you can go lower than that with DOT approval.
With DOT permission. That's the town road issue. Now, we come into the state and the county, which we have to get approval through that, correct?
Right. State laws are fifty-five, but we have some that are posted lower. For example, I think Berrytown Road. There's one that's forty, I know.
Have the-
Berrytown's a state road?
County.
I think Berrytown, Turkey Hill, East Curly Corners, they're all fifty-five. Route nine goes between fifty-five and forty. Forty where it goes through the town and then thirty where it goes through the village.
Yeah, so there are some state roads that have a forty.
Some state roads. You see the reduction when you're coming into, into town, where it crosses from town to village.
Pitcher Lane, I think, some of them.
On our agenda here, it says standard village twenty-five. I thought village standard was thirty.
It is thirty. That was a misprint.
Except in a school zone, by state laws, fifteen during school hours is not, not correct?
We have to set a school zone. We don't, I don't think we actually have a school zone.
We don't have a posted-
But state law, I believe, says during school hours, school zones, but we have to post-
You could establish one, but you haven't, as far as I know.
Some mill road is up there.
The mill road generally what it concerns, SDRS concerns, the village.
Right, the village, right.
And we do have some of the residential areas that are posted at thirty.
Thirty, do we, do we have permission?
Do we have them posted at thirty illegally in essence right now? Because we have not requested permission to lower it from thirty-five. That's my question.
We have permission. And that's where the issues come in. We have to determine which are legally posted at thirty, which are legally posted at thirty-five. Some were posted previously at thirty and some, we can't find the discrepancies that easily.
So, as, just to clarify from my own mind, we could go through, as you do, the new signs on our, our town roads that don't have a thirty or something now and post them at thirty-five without anybody's permission. The ones that we presently have posted at thirty, we should research to see if we actually have permission to have them posted thirty before we buy the new signs. Is that-
That's correct. And the state will have record of all of the postings, but what will happen is that people who are used to seeing thirty miles an hour and now the posting goes to thirty-five miles per hour, you may want to consider asking for reduction in the residential areas, the more crowded areas, to a thirty mile per hour before we spend the money to put a thirty-five mile per hour sign up.
Well, right, that's my whole point, before we spend the money on signs.
Right.
The scenario, we decided that isn't posted now, but we think it should possibly be thirty rather than thirty-five as well.
Right. So, this is to begin that discussion and to let the town board know that this is what we need to do and what we're looking at.
Did you look at Pitcher Lane? I've heard some, had some people over there complaining to me about it. It seems to me there's a forty-five mile speed limit sign on Pitcher somewhere. Down toward nine.
You think it's forty-five?
I think there's one there. And there's nothing at the other end.
Pitcher Lane from Route nine to Bud's Corners Road is a forty mile per hour.
But we could go and put thirty-five mile per hour signs on that, correct?
Not without DOT approval.
But I thought we could post a maximum of thirty-five on every town road?
Not exactly. It's very complicated. We've done a lot of research to try to sort this out and to talk to DOT with it. So, there is a thirty-five mile an hour area limit, but there are certain roads that were excluded and they have their own special limits.
And we don't know if Pitcher Lane was excluded or that that's happened to be the sign?
Pitcher Lane has, has, was an excluded one and is a forty mile an hour limit.
You have that written that it was excluded?
Yep.
But there's no sign at the western end of Pitcher Lane now?
I, now, I don't, I can't speak to the signage. Teresa's the one with a huge amount of research on the signage itself.
It has to be researched, clearly.
Well, she's got, she's got the inventory.
We've been taking inventory of all the signs and their locations on all the roads. There are quite a few of them.
The question really is, what is the appropriate speed limit and where are you seeing complaints and issues? And I think Teresa's looking for guidance on, you know, you know, do you want to request DOT to do a, do a study on particular roads so we can get the process started on the most important roads that you see as problems? So, for example, perhaps in the, in some of the denser residential areas, you know, do you want to ask them to look at those and consider a lower limit in those denser residential areas? In some of the places like, I think Teresa particularly was looking at West Curly, do you want to ask them to do a review on that and at least maybe portions of it bring down, consider bringing it down?
East Curly Corner and Spring Lake Road, I know are both, I hear complaints about them all the time.
But if we're starting asking things, we should know exactly what we want to ask. May we reduce the speed limit in Linden Acres and College Park to thirty on our town road? Now, could you also do a study on the county road, East Curly Corners, Spring Lake, what have you? Because we would also like that reduced from the fifty-five mile an hour, correct?
Right, I mean, I, I might consider doing two different requests to them, just to try to, you know, keep the issue separate. The, you know, here, because, you know, here are several residential areas. They're very dense, they're very tight, you know, there are a lot of kids playing, you know, that, that here's what we think the road speed should be or whatever. And, you know, here's another set of roads with county limits, but we think you should reconsider those limits and maybe put those in as two different sets of requests perhaps. We could put them all together, but they have different criteria.
There's different decision makers here.
I would keep them separate simply because of the fact that the county has to post their own, they have to change their signs. We don't change the-
This request has to come from the board, not from the highway department.
Right, right.
So, so we really all need to work together and agree as a board that this is what we want for the town.
Right, but let's, let's work, let's agree on what we want for our town roads and then, it sounds like we are anyway, but agree on what we want for the county roads, right?
Well, there are some discrepancies in what, we've been notified a speed limit on, for example, Route nine G. I received a letter after a meeting and after a lot of discussion with New York State DOT, a representative from the county, an engineer from the county, and others. And we were notified that, in fact, they were reducing the speed limit from West Curly Corners Road on nine G to Kelly Road on nine G to forty-five. And that would have been last, maybe October or November. And to date, the fifty-five mile an hour sign still remains on Route nine G along that stretch going south.
There's a forty-five mile an hour sign between Kelly and Duchess one oh three now.
Right. But I'm saying to you, I'm saying to you, they did not change the northerly one from Kelly Road to, it's on the, it's, it's going south on nine G. From West Curly Corners Road to Kelly Road, it should be for, it should be forty-five miles an hour and the fifty-five remains.
Right.
So, they haven't taken it down. That's all, that's the only point I'm trying to make is they said-
But only the northern section between-
It doesn't matter, doesn't matter. The speed limit was supposed to have been reduced to forty-five miles an hour in that stretch and the sign for fifty-five remains. It shouldn't be there.
Obviously, the fellow that said that and the fellow that ordered the signs-
Well, the sign was just never taken down, Jim. It just wasn't done.
No, no, it's more than that.
They revised the one between Kelly Road and Duchess one oh three on Whaleback, that says forty-five now. So, but the northern end from Duchess one oh three and Whaleback crossing in, maybe they haven't taken that one down.
They have not.
What they did is they said, "End forty-five right at Whaleback." As you're driving north, it says forty-five miles an hour right about at Kelly Road.
Right.
And then, and then it stays forty-five till you get to Whaleback. Then there's a sign that says, "Resume, you may resume fifty-five" or something like that. And it's fifty-five until you get to My Corner, which is, you know, at Tivoli. And then it's forty-five again till you get up to almost Lasher Road.
Right.
And which is, you know, slow, fast, slow, it doesn't make sense.
I just think it's a matter of they just haven't gotten to it or just didn't realize there's, you know, when you live in an area, you recognize there are inconsistencies.
Well, they didn't do what they said they were gonna do.
Well-
Well, then we should just simply send them a letter reminding that they-
I thought you were gonna say, "Just simply take it down." That scared me for a minute.
Well, that's easy enough, but no.
Four or five signs we could take down here, Patty. You first.
If it's supposed to be that way, why not just take it down? No, but then we, maybe we just send them a nice letter that we seem to think that they've, when they placed their signs, they, they might possibly have made a mistake or overlooked that section of nine G or something like that.
He says it sometimes, though, doesn't he?
Well, they did, but they said they weren't gonna do it vice versa.
Okay, so, so what I'd like to do is, is try to move forward this sticky wicket so that we can talk about the next sticky wicket. And I'd like to make a motion that Teresa and I sit down at least one more time and, and after you're satisfied that you've seen the roads that you feel needs, need addressing. And I'll, I will write the letter on behalf of the board saying, "We would request that you consider reducing these road or changing the speeds on these roads for these reasons." And I, I don't think that's gonna be too hard to do. I've written letters like that before to New York State DOT and to Duchess County. And surprisingly enough, we get, we get pretty, pretty immediate answers. Not always the one we want, but, but they do attend to them, so.
We should put that in the form of a resolution in which you develop that letter, that rationale.
Okay, all right. Well, maybe between now and October twenty-fifth, the next meeting, Teresa, we could sit down and determine the roads and let Chris and the board know, these are the roads we sit, what did I say?
You said October, you mean September.
So, that's what we'll try to do, is between now and September twenty-fifth's meeting, we can come up with what we think so that we can report back to the board and Chris can develop a resolution the board can pass to forward this request to the appropriate agencies, okay?
And I guess also determine if we're asking for area speed limits for the residential area instead of just linear speed limits for certain roads, correct, Chris?
Well, we don't, we don't have to petition those if they're, if they're not exclusion.
Yeah, I think, no, I think what you're gonna need to do is, is in a place where, for example, in a residential area where the town-wide limit would ordinarily apply, you're gonna have to ask for what are considered to be linear limits in particular areas.
Okay.
But, but, you know, I think the point is, we should figure out what areas we need to ask for those limits in.
Like Linden Acres could be thirty-five. Could you put a sign up that says, "Area speed limit, thirty-five miles an hour in all entrances to Linden Acres," for instance?
Well, it's-
Without putting one in there.
Well, I would consider reducing some, an area like that, which, which may have been done in the past, thirty miles per hour.
Okay, whatever, same thing.
You know, it's-
But it would be thirty-five.
It's thirty-five miles per hour and not make a reduction where it's very crowded.
So, just to clear, Ma, what we are gonna ask for on our town roads is- is area reductions to 30. Is that what we're talking about in the development areas?
Only in populated areas.
Right.
And 30, not 25? Because you had 25 down here.
Yes, I'm sorry. I meant I meant to. That was a mistake. 30 is what I meant.
Okay, in the populated areas, i.e. College Park, Linden Acres, what have you, possibly, you know, Echo Valley, whatever, okay? That makes sense. Then as far as as the remaining town roads, are we just going to post them with the exceptions of ones that that have a variance such as Chris pointed out on Pitcher Lane or or do we address that at this time?
Well, anything that's not specially posted on a town road would be 35.
Correct.
Based on, I mean, you post it at the edge of the town.
Yep.
Well, that's not necessarily true. Years ago, if we wanted to lower the highway department, just put a lower sign on it.
Well, is it is it true then? Is it true then that since we're talking? Is it true that we we do not have to expend the money to do signage on all of these town roads? Because if they're not signed, they are 35 assumed?
And that is a.
Yeah, there are.
Question, right?
There are guidelines as to the sign posting, certain uh feet from intersections and, you know, there's a whole list of recommendations that you have.
So we'll leave the we'll leave the decision to you.
Sounds like we don't know what we don't know.
Now, we'll leave the decision to you as to those.
Where we need to be, we can figure out with our manual.
Right.
Okay.
You have a vote inserted.
Right. That's all that there are recommendations on all of that. So this is just the legal speed limit that we're talking about.
Okay.
Okay, so that that sort of clarifies what we're going to ask for. I know it's not in resolution form yet on the town roads. But then on the county roads, we have at least a couple specific places in mind now. We're going to request, do we send that directly to the county before the state?
To the county, yeah, because the county would have to make a request to the state.
The town we send to the state and then we make, exactly, so.
Well, we'll send a vote to the county.
Yes, they both they both go to the county first.
They both go to the county first, okay.
Right.
And at least we know at this present time, we're going to ask for like Spring Lake and and East Curly Corners, I heard.
And then there can just be sections of those roads that need to be reduced as a regulatory speed rather than a warning speed limit. Because if all of the county road is 55 miles per hour and they put a warning speed limit of 35 miles per hour, you may be able to get that section as they did on Route 9 where you have it going from 55 to 45. You may be able to get that changed to a regulatory speed.
Okay. We'll bring it back to you in resolution form.
Okay, can I just, maybe I'm not clear. I'm just looking at your memo, Sue, but I mean, they reduce the speed limit like in the proposed TNDs or College Park.
Well, we haven't we haven't talked about.
25 or 30?
25 was a mistake. 30 is the 30 is the limit in the villages.
That's what you're looking at.
Actually, except for Tivoli. Tivoli was a 25 in the village.
It's a very short 25, and I think that is even outside the parameters of what they're allowed.
I think it's.
No, villages are different.
We have Oriole Mills is 25 miles per hour.
Villages are different from towns.
Oh, I know that. I know that.
Oriole Mills is 25?
Because you can have 30 in the village.
No, you can have 25.
You can?
Yeah.
I thought that was.
With special permission, right?
Yes.
They have different authority over their roads. Towns, um, unless you're a town of a certain size, which means you're probably denser, have this is where the authority is at the state level. And some towns that are more dense of a certain class, they have different authority over their road speeds.
Well, in densely.
We're classified, we're not dense enough. We need like 50,000 population, don't we?
Densely populated areas, though, that are that are, you know, likely to have people walking on the road and so on because just because of the population density. 25 doesn't offend me at all. 25 sounds like children, children and animals and, you know, old folks and all of us.
I don't think we should tie our hands to not not vote for 25. I don't know. I would want to keep that option open.
You'd like to leave it open at 25?
Certainly request that they undertake the study and consider that limit. You know, they won't necessarily approve that limit. They'll do a engineering study and.
But if you say 30, they're going to go 40, 45. If you say 25, they might go 35.
And where we're creating a new populated area, so there's a new development coming in, we do not have the authority to say to the developers it's 25 miles an hour without consulting the county? Is that what you're saying?
Right. It would be automatically the 35 mile an hour.
Unless we ask otherwise. Okay, okay. So I think it's worth doing because some of these some of these areas are some of them are.
They don't trust us without further authorization below 35.
Apparently. No, it's just.
Apparently, in some towns, we're known to do those heat traps.
Right.
For that, we're raising for this.
Exactly.
That's part of the reason for that.
Yeah, I'm sure.
If you had a brand of 500, 60, 20 seconds.
Okay, the second piece to tonight's um item four has to do with with the TND, traditional neighborhood road width. And apparently Bill, you and you and the um task force have been in discussion about this. And I've talked with you and I've talked with Teresa and I've talked with Harry about can we please just get a road width that everybody can live with? And Teresa tells me that she believes the highway department can live with a minimum of 20 feet of roadway and a four foot additional lane for one side of the street parking. Am I correct in?
For the traditional neighborhood.
For the traditional neighborhood development, right. And I guess what I'd like to see the board be ready to do is go to our town planner and ask her for some language that would allow us to codify that. So that the developer knows what we're willing to do, what we're able to do, what we like to do. And they, you know, and the planning board knows what we like to do. And we can move on with some of these developments as they are trying to do. I mean, we we want them to succeed, so I'd just like to see a shortcut somehow in all the many iterations. We've heard about road sizes and this hasn't been going on just recently. We've talked about this for, you know, three administrations now that I've been aware of, right, Jim? So easily. So if we could just get that.
Well, the the discussion, I think, like in the intermunicipal task force, has been that the developer for the Old Farm Road project, it's called the Hoffman TND project, is is with his architects and planners, you know, developing a proposal. And in there, the question arises how wide the roads would be. And with that in mind, when it came before the planning board, the Green Plan Inc. became involved in discussing with with the Hoffman Project people, you know, what the road widths would be. It would require then a zoning change because when we did the Centers of Greenspace in the traditional neighborhood district, we didn't really address the issue of the widths of roads. So that would require a zoning change, which would cost some money. But it wouldn't be that expensive if we amended the Centers of Greenspace once the developer and the planner agrees on whatever the road widths are. I think in that discussion is when everybody's reached out for the highway department officials and the fire company officials to come up with their input on on the widths of roads in the traditional neighborhood district. The issue was if we propose a zoning change that's going to go townwide on the widths of roads, that's going to be a bigger issue and it'd be more costly. And frankly, you know, we're just working off grants as far as what the task force proposes to the town board. So I think the latest was that we would deal with the with any proposal just at the TND level.
Well, this is really a highway specification.
Yeah, this is.
That is an issue here. You have a highway specification which is approved by the town board, developed, you know, in consultation with highway superintendent. And those highway specs are what dictate a width of road which is approvable by the highway department. In other words, if someone proposes a road, Teresa will say it yes or no, it doesn't meet the highway spec, so I can approve it or I can't approve it. And right now, she doesn't have really the discretion to approve a narrow road because you have a specification that requires that that what I would consider to be older, you know, standard wider road in the suburban type development. And so the purpose of, as I understand it, the discussion in the task force was to recognize that the TND was designed to be a village level type development and therefore needed to have a new spec that allowed for that narrower road. And I think some of the discussion that we had years ago was also about rural roads in other parts of the town. And perhaps we can um bite off one piece at a time and look at this in the context of TND. If that's the question before us and then, you know, perhaps ask Michelle to reflect with the task force on then how would that apply in a in another type of development in a in the rural road standard? Because she had lots of recommendations to us about that before.
We we had considerable discussion about the TND and what that required. And one of the problems with adding four foot for a a parking lane, that becomes the same width as Deer Run. Deer Run is 24 feet. And if anybody in town gives their um gives their two cents about Deer Run, it's 20. And we we spent considerable, we spent an afternoon or morning driving around the village and measuring the road widths in the village in El Red Hook. They were all roughly 20 feet. We found a narrow spot in front of Brent's house that was 18 feet, which he loved. But the 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 fire department wants 20 feet. And a 20-foot road seems to be workable, provided it doesn't have curbs. Because you have to be able to park and particularly in the TND, there won't be there won't be driveways off of the off of the roads. So if you have a if you have a family party, there's no place for anyone to to park other than a 20-foot road. And one of the things, one of the conclusions that a bunch of us came to riding around the village was we didn't like curbs in in front in front of the residences and the houses. And there are, there's new technology, and I think Teresa's been looking into it, of ways to stabilize the tree lawn to the point where people could do what they do now in the in the villages is park on the tree lawn adjacent to the road. And you push, you snowplow onto the tree lawn and with with some stabilization. And there apparently are also technologies to do that now. We can pave a 20-foot road and still have parking on the tree lawn. And of course, you always have the seasonal problems. You, I mean, there's nothing perfect here. But the village lives with it the way it is now and lives with it, seemed to live with it very comfortably. I never hear any complaints that I that I can't park in front of my friends can't park in front of my house.
I don't think it's the parking that's an issue in the village. It's getting through on the roads when people have parked. And that's where the concern comes in with a 20-foot wide road with no allowance for parking. The 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 traditional neighborhood development plan that we were looking at, they were building in this parking area. So if they're going to actually designate one side of the street for parking and it's going to be used on a regular basis, I would accept a four-foot wide parking width along with the 20-foot traveling. Now, sometimes the cars will be closer to 6 feet out, so you get 18-foot traveling. You are narrowing it down with that four-foot parking width. But your recommendation would be to have a 20-foot width and have people parking on the lawns. That's outside of my jurisdiction. That's not on-street parking. That's on-lawn parking. And if the neighborhood wants to develop that on their own and be responsible for maintaining that area, that's fine with me. But if we're expecting to have.
What you're really requesting or suggesting is what we have on Deer Run now is and there isn't anyone in town, I ever hear, saying anything rather other than negative, even to people.
Deer Run is a different type of development. They're big houses on larger lots. They're not really compact lots with lots of people.
Yeah, but there's it's still 24-foot, it's a 24-foot wide road.
With different uses. People on Deer Run do not park out in the road.
Is Deer Run 24 or 26?
Well, it may be 26, but it's pretty wide.
That was a big argument we put in. I know they were forced to make it 26 feet.
Nick went out and measured. Nick measured it a couple of weeks ago and told me it was 24 feet, so.
They wanted to make it 24 and I think they were forced to make it 26.
We had agreed that the 26-foot um road specification for the town is is just outdated. It's costly to maintain. It's costly to build. You know, we would be considering narrow roads in the future. But for this traditional neighborhood development, if you're planning on people parking on the street on a regular basis, we would rather see the 20-foot travel lane and then the four-foot parking area. You can't compare this to Deer Run. They're two separate ideas.
Now, would this parking site have to be blacktop pavement or could it be the porous bricks or something like that?
Well, it depends on who wants to maintain it. If if they want to maintain their parking area, they can use their porous pavement. They can use their bricks. We would not be responsible for plowing it. That's that's where one of the issues is. Who is going to maintain that parking area? If it's going to be a parking area that's maintained as part of the road, then we would like to have it consistent.
There are bridges in that where the grass grows through.
Right.
And it just looks like grass.
And that would be the.
It can be the tree lawn and it can be stabilized so you don't go up to your hubcaps from when you drive off in the tree lawn.
So that's these are the things that we have been discussing. And and the fire department is comfortable with a 20-foot width. We are comfortable with a 20-foot width. But if there's going to be on-street parking, I think you have to add that four foot. If it's going to be maintained by the highway department. It's going to be maintained by the homeowners association or by the individual homeowner, whoever sits in front, just like your sidewalks, then they can do what they want with it. It wouldn't be under our maintenance.
So what are they proposing? Are they proposing to own it or not?
They haven't come back. I mean, it's still.
So where it becomes a problem is the big snowstorm in the winter. Our town plows 20 feet and then this these porous, this four-foot wide and it looks gorgeous porous brick section now has a giant snow pile on it. So then the homeowners association or somebody has to move that back four feet so that they have counting part of the part of the town road in that, they have a good six to seven feet to park their vehicles.
But we have plows that plow 24 feet now like like they do on Deer Run. I mean, what you have to do is.
But of course, from our town perspective, Harry, the problem with that is these porous bricks are great, but we know they don't stay the same. And so if our town plow comes through and tears up half of them because there's been freeze thaw cycles, then who's going to fix that?
We have to understand that.
Right. That's that's where it becomes a problem to be the tax.
Well, if that's the case, if that's the case it is, or or if there is a technical, we don't know. We don't yet know what what is available now.
Right.
I hear there is a lot of, you know, a lot of stabilizing kind of procedures and processes and and.
But don't you think it makes sense for us to tell them what it is we want?
Well, I think so.
Okay, then let's let's do that.
Green Plan has obtained that from the fire company and from Teresa. And she's taken that back to the developer. But the developer hasn't come back with any other proposals that they have.
So then we're telling the 20 feet is okay, but they got to come up with proposals if they want people to be able to park there.
Well, I mean, they've been told 20 feet, but yet they got to provide for parking. What are they going to do about parking? What are they going to do about it?
They don't have.
So at this point in time, we're saying you can have the 20 feet and you can extend it four feet.
That's 24 feet.
If you want one side of the street parking.
Well, apparently Green Plan has told the developer what you just said.
I hope so.
Oh, yeah. Oh, sure. So I mean, it's just a matter of giving, you know, going back and forth between developer and Green Plan. So it's still a work in progress.
And those are aligned with Green Plan's recommendations. They're on the outer edge. You know, Green Plan goes from 22 to 24 feet with one side of the road on-street parking. So we're taking that 24 feet instead of the 20 feet. They're going from an 18 to a 20-foot travel lane. We're taking the 20-foot travel because it's more comfortable for our highway, our the highway department planning operations and for the fire department.
And remember that we're. And remember that we're talking, I know you're in discussions with, with respect to a particular issue, but this would really be applicable, you should think of it as being applicable to the entire TND residential area that would be, you know, potentially developed.
Just this one area, yes.
Zone for it, correct.
I would hope so.
Well, you know, we do have, as Harry said, 20 works beautifully in the residential portion of the village because we don't have curbs. However, everybody, just about everybody has a driveway to park in. So there are cars parked on the street, friends come, neighbors, they have parties, but it's not a routine thing. But the way the traditional neighborhood, my mind is clear, is set up. That's where a lot of people live there will park on a regular basis. Is that correct?
Well, there's alleys in the back where they have access to the, to the garages. That's the way it's like, what's been designed so far is designed with an alley between, between the blocks. And the garages are, are entered from the rear of the building. And the alley is very narrow.
So for the personal cars, right? Yeah, for the personal cars.
Yes.
So in theory, it just should be visitors or what have you on the street.
Right. Yeah, it's when you have a family party.
Right.
And all the aunts and uncles show up.
Exactly, yeah. So, Roger, can I ask Teresa a question that pertains to all of us?
Sure.
Teresa, I'm assuming you've thought about this, but you hadn't brought it up. Wintertime, you have cars parked in front of the residents on the four-foot section. Let's say they go for 24. So you have a 20-foot wide road, now you have a four-foot section of parking, and you're saying you might straighten. The car now has a snowbank at the four-foot section at the 24 end. So now it parks, but it's sort of like, sort of sitting in the middle of the road, too. One portion of the car, maybe a foot over the white line, a foot and a half. And now it starts snowing at 10 o'clock at night. The cars, let's say 10 of them are parked up there. Because theoretically, they could park in these garages, but realistically, they're going to park out in the front. So now you have 20 cars, and they're sort of stuck out in the middle of the road. Are you guys going to be able to plow?
Well, that would come under jurisdiction of the snow ordinance we have in place.
Right.
They're not allowed to park from April, from November to April.
That's a traditional neighborhood district, and it's designed, it's designed for parking. It's designed for parking. See what I'm saying? See where I'm going with all this?
Yeah, but I don't.
You're telling the developer, he's got, he's going to build a 24-foot road, which really four foot is for parking. But now all of a sudden, you're going to tell the residents that they can't park there. Now they have one garage and they have two cars because there's two parents, and they both need cars. Where are they going to put all these cars?
I don't think the developer's intent is to have the residents park on the street.
On the front street, in the back. The garages will be in the back.
Yeah, and they have driveways and garages in the back of the houses. What the reality is, maybe something totally different.
That's the problem, which we have.
But if the reality is that we have a no-parking ordinance in place during snowstorms or seasonal on the side of the road.
Well, then in reality, let's go with a 20-foot road and tell the developer that, you know, we have a snow ordinance for the wintertime. And so parking is a problem. So are they going to allow for that in the development of this neighborhood district, right?
Yeah, that seems to be the easiest solution to me.
Yeah.
No curbs, 20-foot roads, and the developer has to worry about parking on one or another side of the street.
It's going to work. November 15th, April 1st, or whatever it is, right? Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think, yeah, it works fine in the village. It's just, it's just easier, it seems to me.
Almost every house in the village has a place to pull off the road and park on property that the person owns. Almost every property. Well, this traditional neighborhood is going to have the back. And what they can design it if they feel it's going to be a slightly compact neighborhood, they can design it then with more proposed parking in the back to handle that overflow that they might get, especially in the winter months when we have a snow ordinance. Because you've got to get the plow and emergency vehicles through.
I think we just need to do, continue to do some more work on this and analyze it and understand it.
Yeah.
You have parking along the curbs, but at night, the, in the, in the wintertime, they can't park along the curbs.
Right.
In the, in the business district as well.
That's right.
It's designed for parking, but they can't park there at night in the winter because of snow plowing operations. So that would remain consistent.
I don't see it as a problem. I think, I think the curb could make it a problem for you. I think curbs would be a mistake. Living on a road now that has a granite curb in front of my house for a long stretch, I can tell you, it's a problem. So I would vote no curbs. Yes to sidewalk, but no curbs. And, you know, 20 feet to me seems ample. That's my.
Curbs are a waste of money.
Throw my two cents in.
Here's your whole mother.
All right. So you don't want to make a recommendation to, to Green Plan Tonight Board? You want to chew on it for some more?
Yeah, and we've been discussing this with Teresa.
Well, why? Why? Why can't we decide? I don't understand why. We are all agreeing on what I just said. And you want to talk about it for another three months? And watch it, watch it disappear until next spring.
No, 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 we can't let it go.
So why would we say 20 foot's allowed? But the developer should show us that he's made provisions for emergency parking during snow season.
He's working on it. The planning board is working on it. Green Plan is working on it. And we have had discussions with all of them to try, and the developer, who's the first developer to move into the TND, is actually now has a second planner working with, with them whom they've hired for their purposes. So they have two planners giving them advice in how to address this issue. And they're looking at, at a material that can be used to address it. And we've been trying to influence them by telling them we don't like curbs.
Okay, well, here's what we'll do. We'll, we'll come back next time with a report from you as to what has developed in the next four meetings on Fridays. And see if the town board can vote on something that will expedite this whole thing for everybody's sake.
Right, well, that's, that's what we've been doing is asking the developer and Green Plan, give the town board some choice. I mean, what is the question?
Yes, Hudson Valley Greenway has, has their ideas that are more similar to what we've been talking about, too.
Well, if the planner, it would behoove the planner to provide some excess parking because if he wants to sell the units, people have families, they have kids. Turn 16, so, you know, they might have one family car and ample space, and then suddenly they have two or three, and they don't have, you know.
The way they've laid it out, they'll have, they'll have room in the driveways in the back for more, as well as in some of them, two-car garages. So they, you know, there's nothing perfect. You know, right now, you will go through Linden Acres, and there's two cars in the garage or three in the garage. And you go to my daughter's house, there's four cars in the driveway all the time in Linden Acres.
Okay, so I, can I assume that we're not willing to recommend anything to the planner tonight? But you will report back on this next time?
Yes. I would yes, too.
Bill? Whatever you know? Okay. Okay. Just wanted to say that we are still meeting with Time Warner and representatives from Panda. Item number five. The town has an ongoing franchise agreement with Time Warner. And they have just reassigned to us two new, two brand-new people who are municipal representatives for Time Warner. And we haven't met them yet, but hopefully, within a month, we should be able to get together with those two new representatives. And maybe we can hammer out a franchise agreement that will be effective for another five or 10 years. We're speaking on behalf of actually all the towns within the Panda District. That's Rhinebeck Town, Rhinebeck Village, Town of Red Hook. I think the Village of Red Hook is still with us on this, and the Village of Tivoli. So Panda is, Panda's doing a good job of getting public access to us. It's, it's a question of whether we can negotiate some help for Panda and some equipment that they need that makes our lives easier. And so that's what we're, mostly we're working on. Bill's done a lot of, a lot of comparison of the contract that we have with Time Warner and, and one that we know exists in a neighboring town with another provider. And they're very similar contracts. There's nothing unusual about them. And thank you, Bill, for doing that.
One thing I can report, I mean, it's a little premature, but the meeting that you had with Panda and Time Warner inquired whether the Public Service Commission, which now monitors and controls cable franchise agreements between towns and franchise providers. The question was whether they would have somebody that would come to the Town of Reddick and discuss with us, you know, what the, what the different legalities are. I mean, it's a, it's a franchise agreement which is non-exclusive. So it suggests that you can also compete with other providers. But anyway, I was, I found out there are only two people in the whole state of New York that are available through the cable systems section of the Public Service Commission to come out and talk to anybody, and they just can't do it. And they basically told us that, you know, we've just got to deal with our franchise agreement and with Time Warner and make inquiries with other providers, which I'm doing. And I'll have that for you in a couple of weeks.
Okay. Thank you, Bill.
Do you want to have this on the agenda?
No. Town of Mylan requests consent at lead agency. And we're just, this is a pro forma notification to us that has come by way of their intent to operate a communications facility. And they have just circulated to any local communities whether we consent, we do not consent, or have any comments. And I will probably return this back with consent or no comment.
Do you need any from us?
No, I don't think we do. It's just, just a matter of information.
I think you're not a, you're not an involved, you can see you're putting too much information that we have, or can express comments that you have any concern on behalf of the residents in the town.
So I get a better signal?
You will if you're out in that area, probably. If you're driving on the Taconic and the tower is in, you probably get a better signal.
But I don't know if you have residents who are within side of the tower that, you know.
That's Mylan's concern, right?
Yes.
It has to have to do with the park plan.
Okay, so that was just for information purposes. And the seventh is a resolution in support of reducing greenhouse gas pollution. And again, I've provided the copy of the resolution. It's pretty extensive. It's in support of the Clean Air Act. And the letter, the resolution goes from us to the administrator of the Environmental Protection Agency. And you could see the various conclusions and all the documentation from which these conclusions were drawn. And talking about climate change and the impact of such change in myriad ways. And finally, asking us as the Town of Red Hook, who have been interested in fighting against climate change and for clean air. And the resolution goes, now therefore be it resolved that climate change is not an abstract problem for the future or one that will only affect far distant places, but rather, climate change is happening now. We are causing it. And the longer we wait to act, the more we lose and the more difficult the problem will be to solve. And we, the Town of Red Hook Board, on behalf of the residents of Red Hook, do hereby urge the administrator of Environmental Protection Agency and the President Barack Obama to move swiftly, to fully employ and enforce the Clean Air Act to do our part to reduce carbon in our atmosphere to no more than 350 parts per million. And this asks that the town clerk forward this to the EPA. Any comments? Any concerns about our signing on to this?
I mean, this is the law of the land as it exists now, as I understand it, right? And, and all we're, we're doing is making a feel-good comment on it, right? Is that a, a proper way to characterize that?
Well, it's pretty dismissive, but.
No, I'm not being dismissive. I mean, this has supposed to have been happening for, how many decades? Well, all right, I'm sorry. I didn't mean it to be dismissive.
I think, I think where local municipalities can feel powerless, this is, this is a good opportunity for us to be able to put our, you know, put our signature on it if we all agree that we can support it. And I think most of the work we've been doing from, through our CAC largely has, has been attempting to make small, take small measures in justice kind of thing. So if no one has any objection, I so move.
Second, so.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. And Sue McCann has talked about the demolition bids coming in, and they're under review. I think that's pretty much it for me. Does anyone have any further items? I do want to ask for any public comment before asking you to go into attorney-client and executive session. Jim, anything on your end?
No.
Sue, do you have anything?
No, nothing.
We all said, okay. Then I would ask to, I would make a motion that we go into executive session to consider a request from an employee on a position. And the second would be to go into attorney-client to discuss litigation, a potential litigation. Is there a second?
Okay.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.